Thank you.
Thank you. All right, welcome everyone for zoning, Wareham Zoning Board of Appeal for tonight, Wednesday, March 27, 2024. It is 6:30 PM and we are at the Room 320 of the Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. I'm gonna call the meeting to order, make a roll call. My far right, Mr. Troy Larson, our clerk, Jim Akabachi. My left, our program member as well, Mr. Richard Sample, myself, the Chair, Nazir Al Qalasi. Also, Veronica will be in her way right now. We do quick, some quick business before she gets here. On the minutes for 3, March 13, 2024.
I went through them. I only found one type of graphical error. It's been corrected. They're fine as I see them unless somebody else found something. I make a motion that we accept and approve as presented.
Oh, boy. I second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes for March 13, and by Jim, second by Rich. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye.
Four, zero, zero.
Okay, that is, we're gonna, we just jump quick to continue public hearing, 39-23, Wareham Cranberry LLC Use Variants. Public hearing still open. They're requesting a continuous for April 10.
So moved.
I have a motion to continue, 39-23, 302O Cranberry Highway. Second by, motion by Jim, second by Troy. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye.
That's April 10, correct?
April 10, yeah. So that is four, zero, zero. The second one, 5-24, for the special permit and site plan review. The reason we continue on this, that we don't have a report from our consultant. So that's why we continue on these, by the way. 2544 and 2546 Cranberry Highway. We also, would be good to continue it to April 10.
I think it says 24th, doesn't it?
Are you looking for April 24th?
I don't know. Is that what this second one says?
I don't have notes.
It says March 27.
You know, on the, well, we, do you?
Oh, oh, oh.
524, do they wanna continue until the first or second meeting in April? Do you know?
Did I not?
It says April 24. No, no, Rich is right.
I'm not looking at what you wrote. I'm asking you because I don't wanna, I don't know how to read.
She wrote April 24.
So she wants 24?
That's what she wrote, yes.
Then she wrote that. So, do we have a discussion on that?
And then an extension as well.
Motion to continue. What's that?
She also added the extension on there as well, the decision deadline. I apologize.
No, no. I was just, we were trying to be quick. That's all right. You can go, you can go back to talking to Mr. Cordero. Sorry to interrupt your conversation.
Oh, for the record, we also have president, a present in the meeting. Principal Department Assistant, I forget that.
Principal Department Administrator?
Assistant.
Assistant.
All right. So, on the, on 2544 Cranberry Highway, what's the wishes?
I'm sorry, motion to continue till April 24th.
Yes. Move?
Second.
So we have by Jim, motion to continue 24. Second by Richard. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So that's.
And that's with an extension to the?
To the time for us to make a decision, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. All right, why don't we move to Dakota? It needs simple majority anyway. All right, let's, let's move forward.
Yeah, we, four can say no or five can say no. It's still, you know. No preconceived decisions. Yeah, well. Thank you.
2-18 Dakota Partners Woodland Cove Insubstantial Modification Request. Just name the record, Counselor.
For the record, Peter Freeman, Freeman Lockwood, Representative, the app, the representative of this, the engineer, Donovan Grinaldi, and Mark Kielow from Dakota. So, the reason that we're here is getting close to finishing construction on buildings in Phase 1 and Phase 3. The building inspector, building commissioner pointed out that there were some grading questions near the building, and it turns out inadvertently that it wasn't graded right in terms of meeting the code. Very minor. It's just around the buildings. Doesn't affect any drainage or anything like that. But since they were not the same, the way they should waden up is not the same exactly as what the plans were that you approved, even though normally the great detail isn't gone into. But the building commissioner and we agreed the safe thing to do was to come back to you and present the slightly modified plans that will take care of the issue of the grading in front of the buildings. And your consulting, I think it's the town consulting engineer, Phil Cordero from Allen &amp; Majors, very graciously, you know, met with us right away, not with me, but went out to the site and, and worked with Dominique, most importantly, to come up with plans that he can speak for himself, of course, but that we all believe work. So, you're familiar with the notice of project change and the regulations for 40B as to insubstantial change. So we do think that this is absolutely an insubstantial change which you can vote to so find after the presentations because it doesn't involve a change to the number of units, to the buildings, really to anything other than, you know, some small grading changes. Important, not belittling their importance, but they're very minor overall in the overall scheme of things. So we do think that they're very consistent with the regulations and qualify as an insubstantial change. So unless you have any questions as to my brief explanation, I turn it right over to Dominique to explain, and of course, then Phil.
Sure. Good evening. For the record, Dominic Grinaldi with BSC Group, the civil engineers, surveyors, landscape architects, et cetera, for the project. So as Attorney Freeman described, it's a grading issue at the building. It's a building code requirement that in the first 10 feet from the building foundation, you have to drop six inches, which is basically a 5% grade from the, the building out. In some areas, we have that. Some areas, we're close. Some areas, you can adjust that grade easy enough and get that, that ground to continue to slope away from the building to the, the previously installed drainage. However, in other areas, particularly in front of the buildings and the little landscape strips between the, the front of the buildings and the, the front, and the sidewalk that runs parallel to the building, you can't. Obviously, the sidewalk is where it is. So what we're proposing in these areas that we can't make this work is to grade away from the building for 10 feet at 5% and then grade back up to the sidewalk or to existing grade, basically creating a small swale. That swale will grade in various directions at a minimum of 2% to, to carry that flow to a series of dry wells. So basically, a small underground structure. It'll have a beehive, they'll have beehive grades, which are the domed grades. So those collect, they have more surface air to collect runoff. They have, they clog less easily. They're less prone to clogging from, from leaves and et cetera. And that, the runoff, which is really just primarily from pretty small areas, almost exclusively landscaped areas, will then go into the dry well and infiltrate back into the ground. We're fortunate to be in Wareham where we have great sands that infiltrate really rapidly. We did revise the drainage model to account for this and provided it to Mr. Cordero, your, your peer reviewer, who reviewed it to determine that it, what it actually does is it actually creates a slightly reduced discharge from the ultimate endpoint, from, from the design drainage, because some of that, that water is, is getting taken off the top. A couple of areas that became a little trickier, I guess. The area between Buildings D and F, which is if you're facing the site, and we have the final plans that were, PDFs were submitted, but if, if you need hard copies, we do have some hard copies. It's the Phase 3 building and one of the Phase 1 buildings. If you're standing on Cranberry Highway and looking at the site, it's the two buildings on the right.
The first two will be.
First two on the right, yep. So between there, there's a bit of a drop in grade. So, and there is a fire department access lane, if you remember. I know, I believe it's just two of you were still on the, the board during the 40B process, but there's fire department, fire lanes out to the middle of the site that consist of a six-foot wide asphalt walkway, pedestrian walkway, and on either side of that, a six-foot wide grass creek. It's basically the, the sort of plastic pavers that grass can grow through with concrete to support the fire truck. In one of those spots, we do need to install a very low retaining wall. I believe it's about 20 inches maximum height that will let the grade drop from the front of the site to the back of the site. Other than that, it's really pretty straightforward with these dry wells. We, as I said, we've revised the drainage calcs, provided them to your reviewer, and I think we're, we're pretty well squared away. We have added the dry wells to the operation and maintenance plan, which we submitted previously, and obviously we'll need to update the recording of that plan as well.
All right, for the record, Veronica, Dominique just came in, 6:44 PM. All right, wanna add?
Just one thing to make clear, because I think I forgot to say it. I think Dominique referred to it. On March 18th, when I sent in this letter notice and 8x11 plans attached to it, you've revised them slightly since then, and have they been sent to planning?
Those have been submitted, yes.
Yeah, these plans.
It's your name for the record.
This is Mark Poulat with Dakota Partners. We met with Phil on Monday on the, on the property. When we, we walked the property a week before, maybe a week, week and a half before, and we talked to him about doing some work out there to see what we could run into issue and then have Phil come back out there and take a look at it and give us some pointers on what needs to be changed. And at this walkthrough that we had on Monday, we did come across some things that he pointed out that we needed to adjust, as well as add a couple additional dry wells. So, since that Monday, this past Monday's meeting, Dominique has updated the plans. He's included the landscaping plans as well to the set. We've uploaded those to the system. So these are all intents and purposes new. So if you guys want a copy, I can give you a copy now.
And the reason I pointed out.
Hard copy for the file, don't you?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, maybe submit a hard copy so they'll have it, although it was uploaded. I guess you have electronic filing, so it was.
Yeah, we'd like to put a hard copy in.
Absolutely. So, Mark will do that. But I just did, wanted to point that out so that should you determine that it's insubstantial, you won't refer to the plans listed in my letter, rather the updated dates. So that's all.
Okay.
Yeah, and one thing, if I may.
Thanks.
That I forgot to mention with regard, and Mark reminded me, with regard to the landscape plan, the, the only revisions are at the buildings and on the front of the buildings. What we agreed to do on the site walk is, because it does create a bit of a drop off the back of the sidewalk, it's, you know, we're talking a matter of a foot or so, we are moving the shrubs that would have been basically up against the building forward, basically to the back of the sidewalk, to just create a visual and sort of physical barrier where people aren't gonna inadvertently step off that side of the sidewalk.
And there's gonna be nothing against the building?
Yeah, I mean, at, at the building then, it'll be, it'll, basically it's grass between, you know, the, the shrubs and the building. There won't be, in the fronts of the building, there won't be shrubs against the building. In the other areas where you're actually looking at, you're not, you don't have that sidewalk issue, the shrubbery and plantings around the building have just stayed the same.
We'll get that in a minute. Let me just pass some questions, and then we'll get to Phil. Troy, you have questions?
I don't.
No.
Jimmy?
I'll wait to hear from Phil.
Richard?
Not at this time, Phil.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll hear from Phil. But regardless what the matter is, or what the plan, we will, if we are, in my opinion, if we are to grant an extension, we will need an okay from us before a keeping supermat, and okay from the town consultant as, as well. We'd like to visit the site as you, as it goes, and it gets close to finish. And to see on site, I mean, studying these plans so quick right now and, and to give an, I think we give an affirmative, like a yes answer tonight for that. But we would like to check it, and we might, like, if something we don't like, we'll address it with you and the town consulting, a shrub here, a shrub there. But regardless, you will need our okay before the CEO as well, our, our town consultant. That make sense?
Understood.
Yeah, you're just, I, I think, definitely I agree, the chicken and egg, which I think you covered, is, again, not being presumptuous, but if you're comfortable with what Phil says, you'll approve them tonight, and then you wanna just make sure, along with Phil, that it's implemented the way it goes.
Right. I go by every couple of days. I drive by. But, all right, Phil, you wanna come forward, please, to state your name and address for the record?
Good evening. For the record, Phil Cordero from Allen &amp; Major Associates, representing as the town's engineering consultant. The summary that Dom and Attorney Freeman put together and Mark is, is correct. The building inspector identified the grading deficiencies, not code compliant. They needed to come up with a, a resolution to it. So, we did the site walk a couple of weeks ago where they presented their idea. We asked them to memorialize it on plan, along with all of the supporting calculations, to make sure it was fully consistent and compliant with the comprehensive permit that they had been issued. They did send that information to us. They submitted it to the board and accompanied by Attorney Freeman's letter on the 18th. We reviewed it. The calculations were correct. They were appropriate for what they were endeavoring to do, which is to take the runoff from the front of the building and put it into the dry wells. It's not an ideal situation what they're proposing, simply because it's creating a bit of a depression at the face of the building. But what they're doing and presenting does meet the code, does meet the stormwater code, so they're okay there. We did identify to them, as Dom pointed out, the potential for a slope directly adjacent to the sidewalk, whether or not it's a fall potential. It doesn't require any sort of railings accompanied by the building code. But we did ask them to look at moving the landscape, so there was a visual barrier from the back of the sidewalk to the fall zone, if you will, of the changing grade. They've done that. It wasn't on the original plans. I'm just being handed the same plans the board is now. I presume it's on there. We want to make sure it's memorialized, so that way it does get put into the record. I think a little bit of clarification. Between the sidewalk and the building, to Jim's point, it's the landscape berm, then they have some grass shoulder, and then there's actually a stone drip edge that's installed at, adjacent to the fronts of the building. The backs of the building will then have the grass and the shrubbery on it. So there's a little bit of a different treatment from the front to the back. Neither one of them are overly problematic. So, at this point, based on what I've seen from stormwater calculations, based on the site visit that I did do with them on Monday, where we identified some, some harder constraints, they've added some additional dry wells, they've clarified some drainage. I am comfortable with it to recommend to you to accept it from a drainage perspective. But I did ask the applicant, where he referenced the fire lane between the two buildings because they were now introducing a drop, I asked them to consult with the Wareham Fire Department, asked them to come on site and look at that area to make, that they were comfortable with it. It meets all of the NFPA code requirements. I'm confident the chief will sign off on it. But wherever we have an access road with a changing grade adjacent to it, we want the fire department to be aware of it upfront, such that if they need any barrier protection, the applicant is prepared to install that. Mark, you might have a follow-up to that.
I do, I do. I did meet, as you recommended, I did meet with the fire department, walked through the location adjacent to that little wall that we have to do, the retaining wall. And so what we came up with doing is similar to the signage that we use for handicap parking, the, the metal posts that go on the ground. He wanted to have one on either side of that with the handy, you know, no parking sign on it, because that's where the ramp leads up to the grass creek. Have it about a foot and a half off of the sidewalk and a foot and a half off of the grass creek at the, at the entry points. So, we also looked at the other locations, just to make sure we're covering our bases on everywhere. So he asked that we put similar type poles at the ends of the grass creek, so that they know when it ends. So they don't drive too far and hit, you know, soft material. So, we'll put at the ends the same poles, but with reflectors on it. So, we're gonna do, basically we have four locations where we have grass creek for the fire department, and at all four locations, we'll have the front signs saying no parking, and then on the back side, we'll have the reflectors, so they know where to stop. So, he was very comfortable with that at the end of the day.
Did, excuse me, Chair, did just, did we get anything from him, from, any writing, in writing, excuse me?
Nothing in writing. It's, we're on.
Because I mean, you, you had a conversation with him and you come to the board. I was just wondering if the, he was either gonna sign something or send it, or if it was needed.
I don't know if it was needed or not, but I can get that. That's not a problem. Like I said, we walked through all the locations and talked about what was, what he preferred to have, and so we've updated everything accordingly.
I'd like, me personally, I'd like to hear from him, just to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, it'd be good to have a letter. But regardless, they're gonna have to sign off as well.
Yes.
It'd be good to have. Drainage coming, coming down to the, to the community center, what are you gonna do with that?
So, Mr. Chair, we, we did speak about that in particular because of the way we saw it during the site walk. So, BSC, Dom came back with some alternatives in terms of providing the riprap dissipator pad that's right at the, the end of the asphalt, and that will sheet flow into the lawn area where it will be absorbed.
So it'll actually, we're gonna actually build a very shallow swale off that corner and run it about 75 feet away into another dry well. But it will have a, a stone. It's, if you look at the Phase 3 grading plans, which works better with the Phase 3 grading plan.
Phase 3?
Phase 3. You see that will cut out, as we kinda talked about on site.
One second, let me.
Yep, sure. It's towards the back.
Landscape.
I put them in order.
Phase 3, C 300?
Phase 3, C 300, yes.
Do you have it, do you?
Yeah, do you wanna just take mine?
All right, go ahead.
So what we talked about is we're, we're gonna break out a couple of feet of the Cape Cod berm that's there. Put, as, as Phil was mentioning, we're gonna put three feet length of six-inch riprap to dissipate that flow, keep it from eroding the edge. And then we're building a very small, it's, this text is way too small.
Yeah.
It's six inches, six inches deep, I gotta get glasses. I believe it's two, I forget if it's a foot or a two-foot bottom width.
But if you get elevation 78, and, and elevation 77.9, seven, a little less, much less at the pads, at the bricks, it's running through those bricks. How are you gonna break it? How are you gonna break it away?
Well, it's running, it's running sort of north, northwest along the avenue. So it is running in that, that driveway does slope to the north. It has a cross slope to the north. So that's where the drainage is going.
If the elevation's, I've seen it on site, and I've seen it.
You've seen it on site, Chairman?
It's, it's pretty flat. It doesn't go north.
Yeah.
The brick pavers don't, the brick pavers are very flat in front of the community center.
Pavers are flat, but the asphalt's flat, pitching down, and it's flat. It's not pitching to the north.
No.
You, you get, that little swale is not gonna, we did talk about this on site, and you could see, I don't know if it's gonna work because you don't have corners on the, on the, on the driveway. I see, I saw one.
We did put it into the drainage calks that we provided, Mr. Cordero.
Yeah, but that driveway, is it pitch, is it pitching north?
So, Mr., it does pitch north. We look.
At the end, where it meets the brick.
It, it does. So we were out there on Monday, just after it had rained over the weekend, and they had a bunch of areas on site that there was erosion everywhere. You, where you could see where the water wanted to go. So what they're intending to do can work if properly graded. When we were on site two weeks ago, the shelf behind the clubhouse, behind that building, was relatively flat. They really need to shape and, and contour that, so that water is pulled into the beehive depression through that swale. And I, I believe they, they can do it. Just needs to be done correctly in the field.
How much you gonna cut in towards the brick, towards the driveway?
That might be a better question. Dom, do you know how deep you're cutting?
Like, is, is the swale gonna start right off the, what's paved now, or is it gonna start where the bricks are?
It's gonna start at the pavement. It actually, if you, if you look closely at the line, it actually, the first few feet are perpendicular to the driveway, and then it turns to sort of parallel the building. It's actually hooking around. There's a light pole baller there. You have to hook around.
It's gonna run to that building. But, like I said, this is one of the things we have to observe. I mean, we are, I mean, we'll see how the board acts. We don't mind give you that, so, insubstantial modification. Personally, I don't mind. We'll see how the board says. But I still wanna visit as it goes, and I wanna keep the rights to change my mind if I don't, well, I can't sign for you when time come to sign. You know, if, if that thing running down that, the way it looks, I don't know how much that swale gonna do. I did recommend to make a trench, like we said, with the grates, but, and you do have the room, the sewer's away, you could dig it. But you wanna try your theory, I'll go by when it's raining sometimes. I'll check it out, and we, and the board are welcome to. And we go from there. And the additionals on the other ones, I guess it looks good with the landscape, and, and we'll see when it's implicated on the ground, and we go from there. Troy?
I have nothing.
Veronica?
No comments.
I'm, I'm, I'm trying to listen. When you're saying everything's good or acceptable, are we talking about drainage? Are we talking about the ability to walk on the surface, or both?
Both.
Both. So it's, so it's, it drains well, and it's not creating any, the bit about a foot from the sidewalk down and moving the bushes, I get it. I just didn't know if when the bushes get moved, you know, are people gonna start going around behind there now and creating a new path and?
I don't think, I don't think they would.
You don't see it?
No, I don't see it there.
It's not gonna be a very appealing, I, I can't guarantee anybody is ever gonna do anything.
Don't ever tell me your project's not appealing.
It's not gonna, it's not, it's not gonna be an appealing path, as opposed to walking on, walking on a sidewalk and walking down off the walkways in and across a landscape where there's gonna be shrubbery and, and a dry well.
I just wasn't getting it in my, you know, so it's.
There's no shortcut, so there's no benefit.
Not a shortcut. The old man's not gonna go back there.
Yeah, really, the only place you'd go.
I know there's no mailman, but.
Yeah, the only place you'd go is from one entry of that building to the other, and it's gonna be easier to do that on the sidewalk.
That's what I, that's what I was trying to figure out. Okay.
It's, it's a weird space for sure, based on what they have to do out there, but it's not appealing, and it's unlikely people would want to use it for any real purpose.
If you steal a bicycle, it'd be a good place to stash it?
I don't know. If your kids are taking some alcohol at night, you.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, good place to hide it. Six-pack behind the bushes on the, got it.
So there's, there's purpose. It's just not what we'd want it to be.
Well, no, we gotta think of those kids. Thank you.
I'm good with it.
If that swale is steep and the building commissioner, for some reason, sees it's unsafe to the public, good, we gotta address it, bigger shrub, something. Hopefully, it's go with him, it's good with him when he sees it. But if he determines it's a trip hazard or something, if it's steep, we'll have to address on site, or figure out what we're gonna, what you're gonna do, and figure it out together. You recommend, we'll see what happens. So hopefully, it's not that steep.
I don't, 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 don't imagine it being steep. I mean, you, you got the curb on the other side, which is more, in my opinion, more of a trip hazard, someone twisting their ankle falling versus a, a gentle slope back with shrubs there, so.
Well, let's hope not.
Yeah, yeah. You would hope not as well. I agree. Yeah.
I couldn't see, what are you planting there?
What are they?
That slope. You know, those green things that grow like that, these are good, and they hold the bank.
I wanna say, and let me just pull this.
Juniper?
I think we actually have a.
Along the sidewalk?
I feel like on the sidewalk side, there's, at the minimum, there's some, I know there's some hydrangeas, there's some trees. There is something that I don't, honestly don't know what it is, because I'm not a landscape architect. There are a couple of junipers.
It's a mixture. It's a mixture of different types. Just to break, just to break it up.
Hydrangeas is not a good idea. I, I would say ju, if you across that bank, you go ju, ju, junipers?
Juniper.
Junipers, I think that's the way to go. Nice, healthy one. They hold that nice, and God forbid somebody fell there like a good cushion. Nice, healthy one, they hold that nice, not for if somebody fell there like a good cushion. And they grow nice and full, and they're high, and they're good. And they're not appealing to walk on them or something. You want something evergreen, you don't want hydrangeas. Think about it before you plant.
Yep, yep. You take a look at that, see what spacing, what they'll go, like, how big they get, because obviously, they don't grow in just one direction, so I don't want to make sure they stick it too flat and sack one across--
There you go, all over.
Yeah, so they get across the sidewalk, is my--
You're going to have your landscaper trim them, maintain them, I mean, somebody's going to be taking care of it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes.
Anticipating that you will be voting in a moment, I had, trying to be helpful, included a draft motion at the end of my letter, page two, so I realized one typo, I referred to my, my letter was March 18th, but by mistake, I typed it as March 15th, so if you follow the motion, it's the March 18th letter. And then I said, including the accompanying plan sheets, but you would have to add as reviled, as revised and filed with the board, based on what I said earlier.
So, you have your motion here?
It's at the bottom of page two.
Right here.
So, it would just be the 15, number 15 should be changed to 18, and after the accompanying plan sheets and perens, you would just say as revised and filed with the board.
So, that March 15 should say 18?
Yep.
Yeah.
I typed it myself, that's why there's a typo.
All right, so these two pages are the motion, the front, the first two pages are the motion?
The first two pages are the request, and the--
The request?
And the motion refers to the first two pages, the March 18th notice of project change.
All right. Jimmy, this one right here? That's the one they're talking about?
Yep, that's it.
Okay.
And this is, this is the motion itself.
All right.
And then this is, this is all, this is all the lawyer talk getting up to make you say that.
All right.
And your reference to the plans that were submitted today, as well.
Anyone on the public want to speak in favor or against this matter? Anybody on Zoom? Is Ken on Zoom?
Not a soul on Zoom. There's no one on--
No one on Zoom.
Josh, any, any input?
No, I have none.
Before we go forward, board member, anything?
I just, I agree with you as far as making sure that we do a walkthrough or a drive-through and check out things, and make sure we help along the way.
So, we reserve that right, because it's so quick to go over this, and granted it is, we will reserve the right, as we go, to go all the time and address issues.
Absolutely. Not for nothing, but it's just a little tough when you look at the tiny plans, it's a lot easier when you see it. Saints believe, and put it that way.
Don't disagree.
Counselor, before we close?
Nothing else, thank you.
All right, what's the wishes?
So, the peer review seems to be okay with it, so with that in mind, I move that this be considered an insubstantial change, and that we--
Why don't you read that for the record?
You want to, you want to read it just like this?
For the record, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine, if it makes sense.
Well, it hasn't been moved and seconded yet, but I will move to determine that the March 18th notice of project change request, a copy of which is attached to here, together with the accompanying plan sheets, for the Woodland Cove Apartments, comprehensive permit constitute insubstantial changes within the meaning of 760 CMR 56.05, subsection 11, and therefore, the revised plans are approved.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If you just add the words after, accompanying plan sheets, as revised and filed with the board.
As revised.
Okay, amending the motion to add as revised and filed by the board?
With the board.
With the board. Okay, so, and filed with the board. Motion by Jim, amended by Nazir, do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Who seconded it? Richard, who did the second?
I seconded it.
Sorry, Troy.
And myself, Nazir, aye, carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Board member, feel free to drive all the time there, see what, if you have any comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
How, how, how close are we getting to seeing people there, you know?
About three months.
About three months?
I don't know, I read at some point in an email that it was troublesome that they had to put people out, but, I mean, hey, public safety comes first.
Right.
And we, and we don't want to hear something down the road.
Help for them if you could just rubber band them.
All right. Any, any plans out there from this, so that we don't, I don't think there's anything to mix them up with, but let's get them all together, because--
Oh, sorry about that.
Sonia heats her house with wood, and she needs something to start the fire.
From an expert of fires, you shouldn't use paper, clogs your chimney.
That's it? Starting with a paper?
The flakes, it goes up inside, and the next thing you know, you're starting getting things accumulated, and you're in there scrubbing it with a brush, a lot more than you want to be--
Ice green pine would work better.
Kindland, Kindland's your best bet.
Okay, very good.
We done with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And I'm going to--
Guys, good. All right, let's move to continue public hearing, seven dash 24, Robert and Janine Perry, for Four Wareham Lake Shore Drive.
And I don't have a folder here for them. Is this, am I putting, am I mixing it? Anything I've been trying not to do, I just did.
All right, public hearing's still open, I need your name and address for the record.
Robert Perry, Four Wareham Lake Shore Drive.
Okay, ma'am.
Janine Perry, Four Wareham Lake Shore Drive.
All right, want to let, tell us what you're trying to accomplish there, what are you doing?
I'm just redoing the front entrance, it's just a block and brick entrance right now. And the stairs are heading right in the way where we want to put a septic system, a new septic system. But I want to tear down what's there, because it's dilapidating anyway, and use the same footprint, it's a non-compliance lock, but use the same footprint, but just instead of having the stairs facing west, I have to have them facing south.
Okay.
So, you're going to come off, out of the front door, onto the same deck, and just the stairs are going to go to the left or the right, instead of straight forward?
Correct. Because it's a small frontage with a weird property line.
Yep.
Wow.
I'd be walking into the bushes, it looks like.
Yeah.
They'll be gone.
For sure. And, you know, just to make room for everything, we need for the new septic, it's got to be that nitrogen reduction.
Yep.
And then the D-tanks after that, so we need quite a bit of room.
Yeah, that's an existing non-conforming, it needs a relief on 1352, if the board feels so, it's not substantially detrimental, will act upon it as a special permit, as 1352's date--
53 allows us to make it a--
Special permit.
A special, yeah, okay.
Before we go forward, a board question. Troy?
I have no question.
Veronica?
No questions.
Jimmy?
Good.
Richard?
I'm good, thank you.
Anyone on public and Zoom want to speak in favor of this matter? Anyone on public and Zoom want to speak against this matter? That being said, anything would you like to add?
I think that's about covered, isn't it?
All right, very well. Okay, what's the wishes?
I think it's pretty simple, let's make a motion to approve as requested.
Let's close first.
Move to close the public portion of this meeting.
I'll second.
Second by Veronica, motion by Jim, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye, closed.
Now, I move to, to approve, and as, as shown on plans in the, here we go, here's a set of plans by, by, oh, the septic plan, Schneider, Davigan, and Leon, they show it on that plan. I don't know if it does, this is the septic plan. I just make a motion to approve as requested.